Meeting of the Warner Creek Planning Commission. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Present.
Commissioner Ward?
Present.
Commissioner Klopp?
Present.
Commissioner Reiser?
Present.
Commissioner Nating?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Also here.
Chair Strongman?
Here. You're right. Thank you. And item two is a consent calendar. I appears we do have nothing on the consent calendar.
We do not.
Thank you. And we'll move on to public communications. Public communications are anything that the public is welcome to speak on, anything that is not on the agenda. And we'll open the public communications, see if anybody's interested in approaching the mic and addressing the commission. Seeing no one running towards the podium, I am going to close the public communications and move on to our hearing. Item four, and I assume. Our first one will be amendments to the accessory dwelling unit regulations for a zoning ordinance amendment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jessica Gonzalez, Associate Planner, and I will be presenting the ordinance amendments for the accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And before I get started, I just want to do some housekeeping. After the draft ordinance amendments were published, we've reread things and just really want to make sure that things were simple and clear to understand. So we have made some revisions, and that was distributed and posted as addendum one, and that is the revised draft ordinance with highlighted changes. So before I get started, I just want to provide an overview of what I'll be covering. So I'm going to start with a just general discussion regarding the legislative background behind accessory dwelling units, or ADUs as they're commonly referred to. And then I'll also provide some context regarding our current regulations and then provide an overview of some new legislation, which is detailed in the staff report. And then I'll also provide a summary of some of the proposed amendments, which are in align with state law as well as input we've received from HCD. And HCD has specifically commented on a few areas that we need to update. Specifically, the need to increase the number of ADUs allowed per lot, the need to increase our height limits for ADUs, and the need to allow for a separate sale of certain ADUs. So getting started with the legislative background and our current regulations. So as you're aware, California legislators have determined that the state is in a severe housing crisis. ADUs have often been considered a potential solution as they can provide for additional housing units. And they're smaller in scale and do not include any land costs, so they can be less costly to build. And they also can provide a source of income to the homeowner, which can help to offset some of that construction cost as well. And so for these reasons, pretty much since the 2000s, numerous state laws have gone into effect, which have required local agencies to not only allow ADUs by right, but really to require us to streamline the process and to remove and reduce certain standards for ADUs. Getting into our current regulations, so in 2021, the city council adopted the current ADU ordinance in response to some state law from 2019 and 2020. Among other things, in compliance with state law at that time, the ordinance was amended to reduce the setbacks, side and rear setbacks to four feet, allow ADUs on lots containing multifamily, and then remove the parking requirements. So getting into some of the new legislation. Between 2021 and 2023, several pieces of state legislation have gone into effect, which have amended the government code regulating ADUs. And among other things, they require local jurisdictions to update our regulations to allow multiple ADUs on lots with single family and multifamily. Also to require us to allow specified heights for ADUs and then various other changes. More recently, a state law was passed, which really outlines our allowed timeframes and processes for ADU building permit review. And the bill also prohibits any kind of discretionary review or hearings for ADU. And the changes in the amendments before you include a new section, which really speaks to the allowed processes and timeframes, which closely follows state law. Getting into some of the proposed amendments in the draft ordinance, I'm only going to cover the areas where we've received some input and interpretation from HCD. But starting with the number of allowed ADUs on a single-family lot, our current regulations allow for one ADU and one J-ADU. In accordance with new state law, we are now required to allow for the creation of a conversion ADU and a detached ADU in addition to a J-ADU. And so the proposed ordinance amendments are in align with HCD's recommendation and state law and to allow two ADUs in addition to a J-ADU. And this is just a visual depiction of what all that basically means. As I noted, currently, we allow one ADU in addition to the primary home and a J-ADU. The proposal is to allow two ADUs, so really, we're just going from allowing two additional units to allowing three additional units. Getting into the amount of ADUs allowed on a multifamily lot, our current regulations allow for two detached ADUs on a multifamily lot or the conversion of existing nonlivable space up to 25% of existing units. State law has been updated and now requires us to allow both, and that is reflected in the draft ordinance before you tonight in align with HCD's recommendations as well. Just briefly getting into the height, our current ordinance allows for 16 feet in height or the base district height. It really depends on the type of ADU and the setbacks. Under new state law, we are required to allow 16, 18, 20, and 25 feet, really depending on the type of ADUs. And the proposed text amendments are in align with those height allowances. Just a few other proposed amendments in align with HCD's recommendations. We are proposing to allow a separate sale of certain ADUs, also proposing to include corner side setbacks as part of our existing four-foot side and rear setbacks. We are also proposing to remove the minimum rental periods for J-ADUs and, of course, remove any non-objective standards or design criterias for ADUs as the review for ADUs must be ministerial. And then we are also proposing to add the recently adopted SB9 standards, objective SB9 standards, to the ADU ordinance as well. And so with that, staff does recommend that the planning commission review the draft zoning ordinance amendments and adopt the draft resolution, making the SEQA and other findings and recommending adoption to the Warner Creek City Council. I'm available for any questions, but this was a larger group effort, so may defer some questions to City Attorney's Office as well as our long-range principal planner. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll start out with questions from the commission. Commissioner Anderson, first.
Thank you. First, just a very general question. This is a response to state law. And I assume that, you know, many of the changes are, in fact, dictated by state law. Others are made as a, in order to comply with state law. It may not be specifically dictated, but the effort is there to comply with the state law. Are there any parts of this that are, that you would consider to be discretionary? Or is it all pretty much to comply with state law? And not necessarily do anything more than that? That's really the focus and, you know, everything is kind of included in that subset?
Yes, as proposed, the text amendments are pretty much just to comply with state law. That was passed between 2021 and 2024.
I'll just add real quick, the kind of discretionary portion, the local jurisdictions do have some ways to establish objective standards. And so we have the objective matching standards. For example, those were, you know, reviewed and comprised by staff and adopted by the council for SB9 units, so they're also included here. And so that's one portion of kind of local control for that.
Okay. A couple of specific things. There's a reference to corner side setbacks. I just want to clarify, that's when you have a corner lot, so it's got two frontages, but the non-primary frontage is still considered to be a side lot?
That's correct. Yeah, that'd be the street side on the corner, that's not the front.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
And the, as I understood earlier, and maybe it was earlier, '20 to '21 laws rather than the later ones, but that the approach was that single-family lots could be split, and each one of those lots could have a primary dwelling and an ADU. I hadn't realized that there was, is it required by state law that if you just have a single home, you can have three ADUs?
So the current regulations allow, if you have a single-family home, you can have one ADU and one J-ADU, which a J-ADU is a type of ADU, it's smaller in scale, limited to 500 square feet. It's a conversion of existing living space, they can share some of the facilities with the home, so basically the two units. Based on the new, you know, proposals with, under new state law, we would be required to allow, there are different types of ADUs, but basically two ADUs and a J-ADU, so an additional three units to the primary home.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the earlier idea of, you know, splitting the lot and then having two units on each lot, that there was, in fact, anticipated there would be a lot split, is that correct? Or could there be two single-family homes on a single lot?
Right, I can clarify that. So, under the ADU statute, there's the general requirements for cities to permit ADUs, and you can either have attached, detached, or conversion. And then state law carves out certain categories of ADUs where cities must permit those. So those types for single families is one conversion of homes or space in the home or an accessory structure. Or it's a detached 800 square feet freestanding detached ADU. So those are the two types that are mandatory under statute. And as you will observe from your packet, HCD has opined that its interpretation of that law is that the city has to allow both categories. So that's two units. And in the lot split situation, if it's a normal subdivision, the standard ADU rules apply. If it's an SB9 lot split situation, our SB9 ordinance only allows one ADU on one of the resulting parcels because SB9 does not require cities to allow ADUs in that situation.
So it's SB9 split, you can have one single-family home, let's call it the original home, with an ADU. You split off another lot that has another single-family home, that one cannot have another ADU?
You can pick one. So if you pick that parcel, that parcel could have an ADU, but not the other resulting parcel.
Okay, so the lot as a whole would have three units, two single-family homes and one ADU?
On one of the parcel, because the other parcel could have the SB9 units if they choose to do that. But they would not be able to have an ADU.
So you wind up with two single-family homes and one ADU?
Correct.
From the original lot?
Right, that was split in two, yes.
Okay.
The result would be two lots, one of which, as Claire noted, could have an ADU. And then the other lot could have a duplex, so you could have a total of four units.
Okay.
You couldn't, but you couldn't have ADUs on two different lots.
Correct.
Okay, interesting. So, let's say you have a single-family lot, you have the single-family home, and you have, you know, you showed there, you know, three ADUs, one kind of interior to the unit, one adjacent to the unit, and one separate, one as a J-ADU. So you've got now four units. Do I presume correctly that, assuming it's a fairly large lot, that you could not, at that point, do an SB9 split? Or could you then do that and still have another unit or two on that original lot?
So part of it, it depends on the size of the original lot. So for SB9 units, or SB9 lot splits, it's meant for smaller size lot sizes. But if you have something that's like two acres, you could probably do a subdivision, depending on the zoning. So it really depends on the size of the lot in terms of like what type of subdivision you want to do, if that makes sense.
I'm thinking not a two-acre lot, I'm thinking more, you know, maybe a half-acre lot or a little bit bigger, which, you know, if you're clever and careful and the setbacks allow, you know, you could split that and still, you know, produce, you know, I'm wondering if you could produce in whatever order it might occur. It sort of sounds like you could do, do the split, you could build. If you split the lot, you only get one ADU that you can attach?
If you utilize the SB9 lot split, if it's like straight zoning, so let's say you have half-acre lot.
I'm thinking of the SB9 split.
Yeah, so if you do SB9 lot split, then what the council has decided is to allow one ADU on one of the lots. Otherwise, SB9 doesn't require ADU allowances because of the SB9 unit allowances.
Okay, so that's a, that's separate from the situation where we get, you know, one, two, three ADUs attached to a single home?
Yes.
I think I got it. Thanks. Other questions? Go ahead.
I actually have two questions that might be more for, I have a really good keynote on the law. First question is for conveying units, it's, that is, when I read that, this is not AB 1033?
No, so AB 1033 is not required. Cities may choose to introduce an ordinance to allow for the separate conveyance for the condominium maps. At this time, we're not recommending that, but we have updated in the proposed text before you the allowance of, you know, separate sale in certain situations for, I believe it's a nonprofit has built or developed a site.
Perfect. And then I was just curious, because I know a few other, it's been in the news, other jurisdictions like San Jose
Yeah.
just did that, so I wasn't sure.
That's a separate requirement from this nonprofit.
Right, right, right. Okay, and then the second question I had was regarding section three of 66323. And it's really about multifamily, because this is the part that's, that I thought I got it, and then, so it says that it's limited to two, two ADUs. This is for new construction. Per lot. So technically speaking, wouldn't the Davis, so if the Davis Sterling Act, right, creates lots for attached products like multifamily, does that mean that then any lot that's created in a CID would then each be allowed two ADUs? You're the D.O.A. attorney. Because when I read it, that right, not more than two accessory dwelling units that are located on a lot that has an existing or proposed multifamily dwelling. And so I started thinking to myself, townhomes, for example, are considered multifamily, but then you would create individual lots for them, so does that mean that they have, they're allowed two ADUs per the future lots that would contain the attached townhomes, which is multifamily?
That's a, kind of a complicated issue, because townhomes kind of can be considered multifamily or single-family. They are one, one unit per parcel?
Not lot, so parcel but not lot?
Well, I'm using parcel kind of generically, so you could also say one unit per lot. I think that's something we probably would want to do more research on before we try to answer tonight.
Sorry, I was noodling as I was driving here.
Yeah.
I think that the general rule that with the multifamily, yes, you do get the two units, but like Erin was pointing out, if it's configured in such a way that it's not considered multifamily or it's not, you know, the use, because the allowance is by, you know, in the residential mixed-use district, but if it's the underlying use is not multifamily, or if it's, you know, multiple buildings, then that's not necessarily considered multifamily for the purposes of this section. So, but we can do more research and report back.
Well, if I could just clarify a bit, I mean, townhome's not a, it's not a thing under the Davis Sterling Act. It's either a condo or it's a planned development, and the ADUs only apply to the planned development. So there are very few planned development townhomes that have enough real property attached to them to even consider anything other than a J-ADU or something of that nature.
So meaning that, because for a town, for attached townhomes, each one would be a condo, like in a
They're not all condos.
No, I'm saying if in a condo townhome project, that each townhome has its own little lot in a CID, then you would be allowed two ADUs?
So if it's a condo, it doesn't have its own lot, first of all. And if it's a condo, then the ADU ordinance doesn't apply to it. So it's only if it's a townhome-style planned development that we would have to think about it at all. And it's, I mean, like, I live in one, right? So I own the lot and the whole property, but there's no space for an ADU detached or otherwise. I think it's kind of a rare exception that we don't have to really dive into in this ordinance. And, I mean, the city attorney may disagree with me, I'll defer to that, but, yeah. So, and then there would be HOA rules that would have to be comported with regardless of what the statute would allow, even theoretically, so.
Yeah, like I said, it depends on how it's configured, and we can do more research, but, you know, that's, as the, that doesn't change, necessarily change the general capability of the multifamily ADU rules here.
Other questions? I have one kind of a hypothetical question. In 50, since we're creating two major types of ADUs with several subtypes, in 50 years where we're, when we're all gone, how is the city and the community going to keep track of that? What is, which one is which and does it matter?
You mean for the existing lot where they're already developed and built?
Yeah, I mean, we will, we're, the city council will hopefully implement this, people start building ADUs under the different categories. And we're going to move on to the great beyond at some point in the next 50 years. But the city will be here, and the ADUs will be here, and their houses will be here, and their lots, whether they're split or not split, will be here. How will the community try and keep track of that stuff? Or does it really matter?
Under the proposed, under the proposed text amendments, it does matter now, because the unit allowance is depending, depending on the type, right? One from type one and one from type two. But I believe we would also be requiring the description on the plans to speak to the type of ADU. And so luckily nowadays, we keep a lot of digital files, so hopefully those will be available for future reference.
So, thank you.
I think that even if it's a ministerial approval, there's still a permit involved.
Yes, yeah, so you would be required.
So, you know, there's going to be some record of it.
Okay.
I say that with some trepidation, because I actually built the first, second unit in Arinda after the second unit ordinance was passed. Went through all the permitting and everything, because I wrote the ordinance, so that was easy. But when I went to sell the house, they could find no record of it, so that does happen. But I had my own record, so that worked out okay. But, yeah, as long as you keep the records, you know, be able to trace it back, should be able to.
Right.
It might be advisable to have them record something to identify it in the recorder's office. A second question is, do we expect any more changes from the state that we see coming down the pike?
I expect that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can expect that.
And we'll now open it up for a public hearing. And seeing one person out there that's a member of staff, I don't think we'll have, we will open and close public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
I did just want to thank staff for the late corrections, I mean, or edits. I do think it makes it clearer, so I appreciated that and appreciated being able to see what was changed, so thank you very much for that.
I'll move the adoption of the draft resolution as presented in attachment one.
Second.
So this is the addendum, that's reflected in the addendum?
That's reflected in the addendum, yeah.
Okay, motion and second, please call the roll, please.
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to our second project, which is the ordinance update for zoning ordinance definition of family. Well, staff, welcome to make the presentation.
We could just have a few moments to get the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I had a corrupted file or something.
Do we need to take a quick recess?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, oh, hold on.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Erin Sage, Principal Planner for Long Range Planning and Policy Work here. And I'll be presenting an item to update the zoning ordinance definition of family. And the first question in many people's mind, probably on reading that description, is why the heck does the city regulate what a family is? So let me start by kind of setting some background of what we're talking about when we say there's a definition of family. So about 100 years ago, cities started doing zoning regulations. And one of the main things they were trying to accomplish was to separate single-family homes from other types of uses. So from the very beginning of zoning, the word "family" was kind of an important legal term. And that kind of lives with us to this day, although it's evolved since then. But in our current zoning ordinance, the kind of foundation for this item tonight is that the definition of a dwelling unit, which is right here before you, is one or more rooms served by a single common kitchen designed for occupancy by one family for living and sleeping purposes. And this can be, of course, both a single-family dwelling and a dwelling unit within a multifamily And this can be, of course, both a single-family dwelling and a dwelling unit within a multifamily building. So the definition of family then becomes important because it sort of defines, you know, what type of people or household can occupy a dwelling unit. And that definition is in front of you. I'll just read through it. It says, "One person living alone or two or more persons living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. A housekeeping unit shall be a group which bears the generic, generic character of a family unit as a relatively permanent household regardless of biological relationship and which is characterized by the following: shared use of a single common kitchen, shared house, household expenses, use by all persons of a shared common entry to the dwelling unit, shared use of all or virtually all areas of the dwelling unit at all times, shared responsibility for household work, shared food, sharing of some or all meals, occupation of the unit under a single lease if the unit is not occupied in part by the owner, and finally, shared social, economic, and psychological commitments." So quite a, quite a detailed list there to ensure basically through a variety of, of means and methods that whatever the city considers to be an appropriate family is occupying these units. I will just point out that in, in the original days of regulating family, it was really, you know, the traditional definition of, you know, people related by blood or marriage. The courts in the mid 20th century determined that that was illegal, a form of discrimination. And so ever since then, cities have come up with other, you know, characteristics of families that are not tied to marriage or blood relationship. So we moved from there into a couple of programs from the housing element, which are really kind of what's bringing us here tonight. Program H4E is requiring, or the, the city has made a commitment to update the zoning ordinance to regulate employee housing for six or fewer employees in the same manner as single-family dwellings per the California Employee Housing Act. That act basically says what I just read. It, it says that employee housing, which is really just housing provided by an employer for its employees, for six or fewer employees, has to be treated no differently than, than a single-family dwelling. And that program has a deadline of fall of, of 2024. So that was the main driver for putting this agenda item together. As staff was working through that item, we came to the conclusion that the best, the best way to ensure that we comply with the California Employee Housing Act is to just state affirmatively in our definition of family that employee housing for six or fewer employees is considered a family. One could argue that many groups of employees would already meet that definition of, of family because there's nothing inherently that says, you know, that, that, that doesn't work as a family. But we felt that to affirmatively show the state that we're complying with this item, we needed to just go ahead and say that explicitly. So as we started to amend the definition of family, we looked ahead to some of our other housing element programs and wanted to make sure that, hey, if there's any other programs that also would require changes to the same definition, let's try to combine those and achieve some efficiency. And, you know, I don't like this metaphor, but kill two birds with one stone. So that brings us to program H4H, updating the definition of family to remove language that creates constraints for persons with disabilities. And let me explain more about that. So here we are again with the, the list of items from the definition of family. The two that are highlighted, shared household expenses and shared responsibility for household work. Those two items are specifically identified in the housing element as things we need to remove because they are constraints on persons with disabilities. If you can imagine, you know, shared responsibility for household work, a person who has limited mobility or has a mental health disability, you know, may very well not be able to contribute much of anything to, to household work. And likewise, shared household expenses. Persons with disabilities often are on limited incomes. And so HCD, HCD directed the city that that was also a constraint. The program also says, it, it cites these two items and then it also says, you know, or any other parts of the definition that would be a constraint on persons with disability, basically leaving it up to staff to do further analysis. And in that analysis, we identified four additional items that, that we are recommending for removal. Items D, F, and G are also clearly constraints on persons with disabilities or at least could be in many cases. Obviously, if a person has limited mobility, they may not be able to access all areas of the dwelling unit as item D requires. Shared food, you know, somebody who has dietary restrictions or is just unable to access the, the location of the shared food. And then sharing some of, or all meals if someone is, is bedridden or again, has limited mobility, that could be difficult. And then item I doesn't necessarily relate directly to persons with disabilities, but it is so vague and difficult to enforce and, and really even understand how that would be interpreted. It's very subjective. So we just felt that if we're cleaning up this definition, let's go ahead and remove that. And, and what that really leaves us with is three items that are very objective, that are very easy for code enforcement staff to determine whether those are being met or not. And that really also really go to the, the, the impacts and the distinction between a dwelling unit and a boarding house or a rooming house or the, a, a, a totally different type of living arrangement where you have, you know, multiple leases. You have multiple kitchens perhaps and more of a dorm or boarding house type of use, which is really, I think, what this definition is trying to draw a line between. So here we, we have the, the text amendment that we're asking you to approve. The cross out obviously is text being deleted and the red is new text. The only real new text is just to add the reference to employee housing. So we're just explicitly including that as, as a family. But otherwise, the changes are as I described on the previous slide. So I'll conclude by just kind of briefly running through some of the policy background for this change. One of our city council priorities is around diversity, equity, and inclusion to keep building on the progress we've made to establish Walnut Creek as an inclusive community that welcomes diversity. I think that this ties in very closely to being more welcoming and accessible to persons with disabilities. In our general plan, a couple of policies that stood out in our analysis were quality of life policy 2.8 to maintain a range of high-quality housing and affordable workforce, workforce housing options. And around built environment policy 5.1, require infill development to be compatible with adjacent nearby uses. The first one, I think, is clearly related to this as we are opening up more housing options in general, particularly workforce housing, which is typically, single-family homes would not typically be considered a workforce housing type. But if there's less restrictions on who can, what types of people and what types of groups can get together and be considered a household legally and rent a single-family home, then that is going to open up more options. And then on the second one, this relates to ensuring that we, as we make these changes, we continue to have the ability to enforce those distinctions that, that do exist between dwelling units and other types of uses. And I think that the, the remaining language in the code does that. And then finally, from our housing element, goal H4 is to minimize the impact of potential governmental constraints on the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing. And the current definition is a constraint as identified in our housing element. So we are addressing this goal tonight. And then I just wanted to finally kind of summarize the objectives of, of this item. First off, to comply with applicable state laws, implement our housing element, increase housing options and provide more equitable access to housing for employees and persons with disabilities. And finally, to maintain the components of the current family definition that distinguish individual dwelling units from higher intensity group residential uses. And here's the recommendation that you will adopt the resolution that's been provided, recommending that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to this definition. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, particularly the history of how we got to this problem. Questions? Commissioner Ward?
Hi. Thank you very much for that interesting presentation, particularly like our chair said, the, the history portion. So defining family and putting it in government regulations or other rules, you know, strikes terror into my heart, basically. And as someone who, well, nothing's more important to me than my family, obviously. I think there's a lot of ways to make and have a family. And I find that history and use of regulations pertaining to families to be historically grossly discriminatory and exclusionary. You know, and worse when, you know, certain people couldn't get married to other people and we were defining, you know, things through that better now. But still, just not great. And I'm just wondering why we're doing this at all? Why not just eliminate the family definition entirely except when it's absolutely required to cross-reference a particular statute? And why not, I mean, it seems like we're really dealing with occupancy limits. And those, why not just have that? And then have exceptions for various protected classes that we need to have, like age, family status, children, you know, these kind of things. I, I just, I don't understand why we're jumping through all these hoops to, you know, count the number of entry doors or kitchens or things. It seems unnecessary. And I also am wondering why we're holding on so tightly to this historical just negativity with regard to boarding houses. You know, oh my gosh, it's, you know, it's not 1849 with the gold rush, you know, and people like, you know, doing this crazy stuff. It, it, if we're really trying to create a larger variety and a larger variety of cost, price points for different kinds of housing, then I don't understand why a boarding house is so terrible, honestly. Why people getting together and, you know, having, renting bedrooms or doing different things like that is such a huge problem to us. It seems like the problem is people's conduct or the fact that people would be overusing communal resources or making too much noise or doing all these different things. And we have regulations for those things already. So I don't really understand why that's an issue. You know, and I think when you have, you know, hacker hostels that people put in and, you know, do all these things, those could be addressed by occupancy limits and other regulations on conduct as opposed to status. And I'm always opposed to regulating status unless it's absolutely necessary. I think we should regulate conduct. And if noise or nuisance is a problem, we should address that. We shouldn't say, oh, well, you're not a family, so you can't be here. And I think that things like skilled nursing facilities and sober living facilities and all these exceptions to the, the zoning regulations are already very clearly defined in our statutes. And I, I just, I'm not quite sure what we're trying to do here and why it's so necessary. And I, this is, I obviously put a lot of work into this and I really do appreciate it. But I'm just wondering, like, why we need it? Like, what, what is it getting us to eliminate every single definition other than how many front doors we have and whether people are, you know, have one kitchen or not? I, I'm just not sure what we're doing.
Well, we are implementing the housing element. We have very clear direction that we do need to amend this definition. So we're, we're carrying out that, that direction. I think the changes that we're proposing go pretty far in the direction that it sounds like you'd like the city to go by, you know, substantially deregulating the definition of family. But what I'm hearing is that, and I appreciate the comments, I really do. What I'm hearing is that it, it doesn't go far enough and really should, there should be a kind of a, a much more ambitious, you know, policy change brought forward in this area. And I think that something like that could certainly, you know, staff could certainly work on that with direction from the city council to, to pursue that. But that would require, you know, a ripple effect of other changes throughout the code to kind of, because the, you know, as I showed, you know, the definition of dwelling unit relies on the definition of family. And obviously, single-family and multifamily dwellings are, it's a use type that is sort of sprinkled throughout the city. So we would just have to kind of work through all the implications of, you know, what would be the new regulatory scheme and how would that be implemented? You know, that would take some pretty substantial analysis. But, you know, obviously with direction from city council, staff would, would work on that. But we do have, we do have a short timeframe for this particular housing element that we need to meet.
Okay. So I mean, that was part of my question too. Like, we're being forced into it basically because the term family is just embedded in so many places throughout the various codes that we can't eliminate it entirely. I mean, that's just.
Not, not at this time.
Okay. I mean, I think it should be a goal. I think it's contrary to our, our DEI objectives and our objectives to try and have a greater diversity of housing types and price points in the community. And I think it's unnecessary. You know, I, I think, I, I do really appreciate the, the insight with regard to the unintentional discrimination against people living with disabilities. I think that's really something I hadn't thought about in that way. And I think that's really helpful. And obviously, the emphasis on economic contribution to a household also discriminates against a huge number of people who contribute to the welfare of that household but do not get money for their work essentially, which is disproportionately women, but not always. And so I think that's a, a good recognition as well, although not a stated complete objective for this. But I, I, I just, I just, like, once we've stripped it down to these three things, I just kind of feel like, well, what's the point? It's just, I mean, really, the family should be, I mean, you should be able to live with whoever you want, obviously. And, you know, love whoever you want and have your family set up the way you want as long as you're not, you know, bothering the other neighbors and, you know, hurting people or doing these things. And I, I just don't really want to get in the business of regulating whether or not that's permissible because it's none of my business. And I don't think it's the business of the city Walnut Creek either. So I, I, I mean, to me, I, I'm not opposed to what you've done here. And now that you've explained that it kind of, we're kind of stuck with some old, old fangled terminology here. You know, that, that's great and I do appreciate that. I just think that maybe we need to think a little, you know, think a little bigger. You know, when we're, when we're redoing all these statutes and just think, well, why? Why, why do we hate boarding houses? Why do we, you know, what's with the, why are we involved in people's families? You know, like, let's just, let's just go with numbers of people and whether or not you're, you're bothering people. Kind of, that'd just be my opinion. So, thank you. I appreciate the explanation though.
Other questions? Commissioner Anderson?
I just, just to piggyback on that, the, I think, you know, part of the, the issue that you bring up is because of the word family, which has all kinds of connotations in a million different ways. And you're right that since we've taken out all the stuff that sort of relates to families and we're, we're really talking about, actually appears in here, which is a housekeeping unit. A housekeeping unit should be a group which bears the generic character of a family. Well, does it really have to? Or can it just be a housekeeping unit? I mean, the terminology seems a pretty simple fix, actually. I'm not suggesting that we, we fix that as we speak. But maybe not at this time, but at the next time or at some, perhaps not too distant a future time, say, can we just use housekeeping unit and have it related to dwelling unit and not get ourselves enmeshed in families? Because, you know, I do estate planning and families are really tricky.
So complicated. So complicated. Yeah. I, I think that's a really good point. I really appreciate that comment. And I, you know, it's, it's not as warm and fuzzy, clearly, but I really don't want the government involved in my warm and fuzzy family at all. So good, I, I think that's a good suggestion.
Other questions? And obviously comments at this point in time? Let me open it up for public hearing, unless there's. And seeing, this is the time anybody in the public present can come forward and speak to us on the subject. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments or more questions. Or a motion.
All right. Well, if, if no one else has any comments or questions or speeches.
All right, well, if, if no one else has any comments or questions or speeches they'd like to make at this time, I would, I would move that we adopt the resolution as drafted and, um, you know, I think, I think I owe you that for all your hard work, so, thank you for that, so, um, that's my motion, as drafted.
We have a, a motion and a second. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to commission, commission considerations, do we have any considerations?
Uh, none from staff.
Okay, and moving on to the next item is commission, member and staff reports or announcements. Any announcements or reports? Seeing none, we will now be adjourned as item seven. Thank you for coming tonight.